Okay, we'll get started. I'll call to order the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, May 19th, 2025. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Higgins.
Here.
Kurt Storfer.
Here.
Knipfer.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Van Campen.
Here.
And trustee Manki is absent.
Thank you. Item three, approval of May 5th, 2025, Village Board meetings if correct or correction mistakes, if any. Tom and Tim. Corrections, comments. Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Item for discussion and/or possible action. A public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Fifteen minutes will be provided for this item with a three-minute maximum per speaker. Anyone here for public comments? Public comments? Seeing none. Item four B, pre-application presentation for tax incremental financing and affordable housing funds from MSP companies related to the Oregon Senior Living Project located at 169 203 and 215 South Main Street. If you could just state your name and who you represent, and we'll get started.
Yeah, thank you, Village President, members of the board. My name is Tom Denaway.
And I'm Brian Woolsey. I've been here twice before.
And this is my first time here in front of you. It's a pleasure to meet everybody. We're here tonight to talk about the pre-application process as part of the TIF submittal that we anticipate submitting for the senior housing project that we're proposing to develop within the Village of Oregon. To start with, if you just want to jump maybe... Perfect. So just to start with, a little bit about MSP companies, is we are a full-service real estate development firm. We have our own in-house construction entity, and maybe most importantly, we also have our own property management company. Related to this is a senior company called Heritage Senior Living, if you want to jump to the next page. So this is a list of all the projects that we've done. On the left, these are all the affordable senior developments that we've completed. You can see there's almost 1,300 or 1,355 units of senior low-income housing tax credit projects that we've created. And then on the right, almost 1,000 of affordable family-style apartment projects that have also been tax credit projects. Next page. On the left here, you will see all the Heritage Senior Living campuses that have been developed across Wisconsin. These provide a continuum of care from independent living all the way through to memory care within each of those. And then we've also done a number of market rate developments and have... do own a couple of office buildings as well. Important about MSP is we have our own property management firm, so it's a related company and a single entity that you would be dealing with. It's not... we wouldn't be developing it and handing it off to a third-party management company, and then you wouldn't know who to talk to. You'll be able to reach out to the exact same company for everything, from construction all the way through to asset management and operation. And that includes onsite experienced asset managers and leasing agents that'll be responsive to the community's needs as well as the residents' needs. So that's a little bit about us, if you want to jump to the next slide. So the project itself, it's a senior living building, so it would be approximately 77,860 square feet. We've got three levels of above-ground residential living, and then one level of structured parking underneath. In addition to the 50 structured parking spaces underneath the property, we also anticipate 18 surface parking lots for guests and, you know, service operation and the like. It's planned to be a 57-unit building with a mix of one and two-bedroom units, and 100% of the units will be income-restricted as well as age-restricted. The average... the income limitation will be 60% of the county median income or lower will be what the limitations are for the units. In addition to that, the building is programmed to have a community room, fitness center, office, as well as tenant storage facilities. So all of this is being done as part of a tax credit application with Wisconsin Housing and Economic Development Authority. They are the tax credit issuer for affordable housing tax credits within the state. So we are in the process and awaiting, with bated breath, any day now, the response from WIDA as to what the awards are going to be for 2025 for construction in 2026. They have a May announcement date, so we're well into May and still, you know, like most things, it's always the end of the day. So hopefully by the end of the month, we should be successful with being awarded. We're confident, which is why we're in front of you today, that we will be awarded, and that's why we want to kind of get a head start in this process. So nothing formal will be submitted until after we get that formal award from WIDA, both as it relates to TIF as well as the planning process. All of the applications for that will be submitted and initiated once we get an announcement of that award, so hopefully starting in June. So this is the site overview, so this is what the site plan looks like. You can see it's located on Main Street. It's pushed to the southeast or the... I can't remember actually which direction it is, but the corner of Main Street with access and parking in the back to keep that hidden from the main roadway. There will be some stormwater pounding onsite as well. We're going through, as part of the planning process, we are developing the facade plans for the building and what the elevations will look like. All of that will be back in front of the Village, both the board and the planning commission as we go through the site implementation plan. So previously, the general development plan for the project was approved by the planning commission and as well as by the Village Board. That was necessary for application to WIDA. Once we get the WIDA award, we will go through and finalize the planning and the elevations and go through the full planning process with your planning commission as it relates to the site implementation plan as well as the certified survey map. So much more detail and analysis to come there and much more pretty pictures to get into than we have available tonight. But again, wanting to be cognizant of that, we're not in front of... or we haven't completed the WIDA award yet. So as soon as that's done, we'll be submitting all that information for completion of the planning process. We're here tonight to start talking about, as part of the pre-concept and consultation, the utilization of tax increment financing or a TID district as well as the Village's Affordable Housing Fund to assist with the project. I'm sure, as you're all aware, the creation of affordable housing is a difficult process and always also not a very financially feasible process without assistance. So in addition to the tax credits and other programs that we're looking at, we're also going to be seeking assistance related to the creation or the utilization of tax increment financing from the Village Board as well as the Affordable Housing Fund. As it relates to the use of TID, there's two potential opportunities that could be done there. One is the expansion of the existing TID 5 that the Village has. The borders of that neighbor are almost one parcel away from the development site, so there's potential for that to be expanded. Or the other option could potentially be the creation of a new district, provided the property qualifies in its current state. Our plan is to work through that and which determination is best for the Village, both with city staff as well as with your consultants. The process for either modifying an existing district or creating a new one is the same. So from a timelines perspective, it's about even. It's just whichever avenue is most advantageous for the city is the one that will take. And then similarly, we're also going to be seeking assistance in the utilization of the Affordable Housing Fund that the city has. So most importantly, if you go back up one step, probably the most important question is how does this project relate and align with your existing TIF, Village TIF policy? So in reviewing the policy, there's three main TIF priorities, and I think personally, I think the project aligns very well with each of those priorities. First, the first priority you have in your policy is the creation of housing. So obviously, this project would fulfill that as well as it would also fulfill it by being both income-restricted as well as age-restricted, which were both sub-priorities within that policy point, within your policy. So I feel it aligns very well with that. Your next priority was accessibility. As a senior age-restricted design facility, the full facility will be accessible, and in addition to being an accessible facility, it will also have supportive services provided to the residents or available to the residents within the building. As part of our application, we have got a preliminary agreement with Lutheran Social Services to provide supportive services to people with disabilities that are within the building. It's targeted for residents at the 30% AMI limitation, but it will be available to all residents within the building. So in the accessibility portion of the policy, it talks about both physical accessible needs within the design of the building as well as supportive services. So again, I think the project aligns very well with that priority within your policy. And finally, from a sustainability standpoint, that's the other main priority within your TIF policy. The project aligns very well with that as well. We do anticipate a solar array being part of the construction of the development as well as full Energy Star appliances and other energy-efficient design standards within it. That's a criteria as part of WIDA as well as our own desire to make these buildings affordable and efficient in their use as a long-term asset manager and owner of the site. So those are the three main priorities within the TIF policy, and it's my opinion that I think the project really aligns well with each of those three main priority points. So with that, I will turn it over. I guess the next steps, just to reiterate, we are waiting for that award announcement from WIDA, should hopefully come in any day now. If we are successful in being awarded tax credits, we will start the formal application for TIF assistance as well as the submittal of the application for the planning process for both the site implementation plan as well as the certified survey map. And then finally, when all of that is approved, the next step will be the application for the building permit. And with that, I'll turn it over for questions.
For members. Amanda.
Just thank you. This very informative presentation, so far so good. I like it. Question, you said that the income limit, the upper limit is less than... you have to make less than 60% of the county median income. Is there a bottom limit, or is it just open? Can people... because a lot of times it's a range, like you have to make at least a certain percentage of the county median income to be eligible. So I was wondering if it's like a range, or is it just any amount less than 60%?
Do you know off the top of your head?
I don't know if there's like a bottom limit, but people do... importantly, people do have to pay rent, so you have to be able to...
Have to pay something.
You have to pay something, and so we have affordability that ranges from 30% of AMI all the way up to 60% of AMI.
Okay, so the bottom is the 30. Okay, that was my question. And I think that's it.
Oh, okay. Any else? Lynn, please.
I have two questions, completely unrelated to one another. First is the Affordable Housing Fund ask. I'm sure that more of those numbers will come into focus when you've got your WIDA numbers and you can make some more determinations on things. In our memo, I don't know if you saw it in our packet, it explains that we have a bucket of money, certain asks have already been created. We don't really see that bucket of money potentially at least coming from TIF being...
Replenished?
Repenished. Thank you for the words. Replenished until like 2036. And so could you give us a ballpark on what that number might look like in terms of, you know, with what we have left? Will you be asking for a good amount of that? Will you be asking for a small portion of that? Is this an unreasonable question to be asking you right now?
No, certainly not an unreasonable question. We are just doing our preliminary financial feasibility analysis, and we haven't refined a specific ask yet. Some of the ask will be dependent on the structure of the tax increment agreement and the utilization of that and the duration of that. So the two would probably move in conjunction with each other. We are looking at a fairly significant gap, though, I believe, from talking with our analyst that does our tax credit projects. So we will be looking to utilize potentially as much assistance as we can, because I think it's going to be necessary for the project to be feasible. And ultimately, whatever that amount ends up being, we'll be providing documentation both to the city staff as well as our consultants, documenting all the reasons behind the ask, and there'll be a full financial underwriting of what that... the reasons behind that ask and what that ask is. So I'm certain that whatever the amount ends up being, that it'll be, you know, an amount derived in conjunction with your staff and consultants as far as demonstrating the need for it. So I don't know if I could speak to the specific amount at the moment, unfortunately.
That's okay. And then my second piece is sort of a question slash comment. In terms of the sustainability piece, I don't... I can't speak for the board, but I'll speak for myself in that when you come with a more formal ask on that, seeing some really forward-thinking sustainable measures would be really appreciated. I appreciate the solar array, the Energy Star, although Energy Star is often sort of a standard at this point in construction. So I know that our committee, our sustainability committee within the Village is really looking for some developers to be pushing the envelope on some of the ideas around development. And there's also some great opportunities. EV charging stations, there's some things out in Dane County that can support some of that. So even your willingness to work with the Village on some of those aspects, you know, giving us some parking spaces that we can maybe utilize for EV charging or something like that, having that incorporated into the plan, I think, would certainly help in scoring points, if you will, or sort of getting an advantage on that ask when it comes down to the...
Yeah, that's excellent point. When you say EV charging, are you talking like a community, like, you know, within the parking lot that other people within the community could use to...
Yes.
For EV charging? Okay.
Correct.
We'll certainly pass that along as part of the design-construction. I believe the structured parking will have EV charging facilities within it.
Fantastic.
But that would be more resident geared as opposed to, you know, community available, but we can talk about that with our construction manager and see if that's something that's capable of being incorporated. In terms of other sustainable features, was there a specific area where you... are you thinking like the rain gardens, that kind of stuff, or any suggestions?
Yeah. The Sustainability Committee has been looking into rain gardens. We've got some community partners that would probably be willing to work alongside in sort of helping implement that as well. But also things like, we have a partnership with Greenbox Composting, and they have a residential program where they work with developers to designate a space within the building that would allow residents to put food scraps there. And you can do it kind of by tenant or as an entire building, as sort of an amenity. We have all of that contact information. Even working with our Sustainability Committee, we might be able to provide some ideas as far as some pretty low-hanging fruit in terms of sustainable actions.
Excellent. Well, yeah, we'll definitely take that up. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Yeah. Any else? Tom?
My questions most, again, went to the Affordable Housing Fund, and it's the financing funds that we have available. I guess, what's our long-term plan for that? You know, this is... we're kind of through the halfway through the period of it was formed in 2009, and it looks like we're getting towards the end of that fund, and it would drain that, and then we're 15 years without any real source for that.
Yeah, I would say if, you know, we'll have to look at a TIF arrangement, what the ask is and what needs to be arranged as far as how many years are left on the current district and doing a new district. But I would say I would lean towards probably we would want to use TIF rather than the Affordable Housing Fund in this case, just because they have the capacity to go through the TIF process, whereas some other projects might not really have that capacity, and we might want to save those funds for some of those types of projects. But like you said, we'll take a look at it, and we'll see how things pencil out. Maybe it makes sense to do maybe a combination of the two in some way, but it's really going to hinge on that financial analysis that's done.
Yeah, I guess my only other comment is I do agree that the goals of this project and the orientation is very aligned with what I see as our priorities that we've established within our policies for TIF. So that leans heavily in your favor, and so I guess you're looking for an indication basically from us of what might we get. I guess there's a lot of favor in relationship to senior housing and affordable housing, so that's a real strong element, I think, of the current board. So at least in my view, that would be an important element. You know, I think that you have a good indication there.
Thank you.
Amanda?
Sorry, I thought of one more thing. Some of the residents in the neighborhood asked about a traffic study, and I didn't know if like TIF could cover that or trying to figure out how that traffic pattern would work, because that's for public good, I guess. Is that something that it would cover?
Yeah, it could cover that. It might be something that we'll want to talk about as far as maybe the SIP process and then as we kind of get into the TIF development agreement, if that's part of the equation of something that we think is necessary or we want to do as part of this project.
Tim?
I would just offer to second what Tom said about this being in great alignment with some of our priorities. So thanks for bringing this forward, and good luck going forward.
Thank you.
Let's see how the next steps go.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would agree, and I think I can say that's the sense of the board to go to the next step.
Excellent.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Look forward to seeing you again.
Item five, approval vouchers in the amount of $878,518.45. Motion to approve. Tim and Amanda, questions, comments? Lynn?
On page 46, I'm going to pull it up so that I can see it myself. The City of Madison traffic signals. Can someone explain that to me?
Yes. So we contract with the City of Madison Traffic Engineering to do all the programming and the maintenance on our traffic signals, and that's what that is, is them doing their routine maintenance.
Interesting. Okay. You learn something new every day. And then the last one I have is not necessarily a question, just a comment. There is the charge from Trees of Hope for the $5,000. That is reimbursed through a grant that we received. So just for public knowledge, the Trees of Hope charge, I don't even remember what page it's on, is reimbursed through a grant. Page 52.
Anyone else? Okay, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Kurt Storfer?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Van Campen?
Yes.
Knipfer?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six, consent agenda, staff recommendation, motion to approve consent agenda items as presented, items 6A through 6C. Tim and Paige, questions or comments?
Just have one?
Just on the revised job descriptions, I noticed that the public works crew positions,
there was a lot more alteration in the duties and the activities that they were assigned, but it's from what... trying to compare strikeout versus the actual, it didn't look like the jobs were changing dramatically, but basically, all of this is really doing is shortening the time until they can be considered for a promotion. It doesn't grant any promotion or promote anything. It's just that at that point, with that many years' experience, then you can start to consider them for the next grade.
That's correct. So the reason that you saw a lot more movement in the public works crew person positions versus the operators is kind of twofold. So one, we do, as of Friday, have a vacancy on our crew. We did lose one of our crew people to a different position, and so we are looking... we were looking to kind of condense the crew persons 1 through 3 positions into one very easily comparable position, such that we could advertise for a range of experience. So we wanted to really line that up, and so that involved a lot of moving around. Number two is, and this is just a me thing, I didn't write those positions initially where I did the operators, and so I tend to be a very particular writer, and since we were going through it, I did a lot of moving and editing to make sure that it made sense to me and hopefully to other readers. So you're absolutely correct that the content of it didn't change. I just did a lot of reworking it for readability and for that easily compared aspect.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay, we have a motion by Tim, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven, reports of committees, none. Item eight, unfinished business, items for discussion and/or possible action. A agreement with OPN Architects Incorporated for architectural services related to the Oregon Area Senior Center Building Project in the amount of $961,875, and supplemental services totaling $95,625. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Amanda and Tim, discussion. Tom and Lynn?
My first item, or my primary item, is on page 138 of the packet, and it has to do with the dates that are being utilized, and I guess I lost... normally, I would think this would be in a sequential order, and it seems like there's sort of like intermixed activities, some relating to the different phases within the project. And I guess my... what I missed was is after the senior center building new is done, looks like February 18th or 19th of 2027, we would have a phase after that of demolition and building out of the parking lots, and I didn't see that in here, and I don't know if something was misdated or did I misread something. Realize it's a long contract, so it was... and what I was looking for explicitly was for the demolition of the senior center and the support that we'd have in building out the parking lot.
Looks like that was missed.
I guess so. What are you looking for?
Well, I'm wondering if the... if one, there's... there is site demolition July 1st, and then another one on July 29th, then it's completed, but it doesn't talk about any phasing or development or support coming within the demolition of the actual senior center after they move in.
Sure.
And I don't know if that's needed within the contract, but it seemed like we would be expecting their support and help doing the parking lots and building that out.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if they're including that within one of the items here as a part of a package or not. Yeah, I'm not sure.
Do we know what these dates represent? Are these phases within the project or milestones that we're expecting? Or it just looks like there... we kind of go from an overall budget and then into just, here's a bunch of dates, and I don't know if those are milestone dates or...
Yeah, Larry, can you help me on contractual part of this? But, you know, I think the scheduling and the dates are less important in terms of what they're delivering as far as work product. And so what this contract does is it goes through a standard architectural design of the facility. They have three different phases that they engage in. They have three different phases that they engage in, um, where it's basically an iterative process of further refinement until they get to the point where they have enough uh, you know, detailed construction documentation to put it out for bid. And then throughout that, they have, you know, phases that they're assisting us with, you know, bidding and negotiating. And then assuming that we build the building, construction administration. You know, whether that, some of that is rolled in specifically into some of those items as far as the um, you know, the design or the uh, coordination of the senior center demo. I, I would guess that it is included. Uh, I wouldn't think that would be omitted, um, just based on the work that was done.
I will note on page one forty-six of the packet, there's um, in the center of the page, it's section four point one point one point three one. Other supplemental services does say site demolition, including construction drawings, bidding and construction administrative services. So I don't know if it's within those site demolition services.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess I, I did have the opportunity, some of the, see with the building committee to see some uh, some of the preliminary information. I guess the, um, if you want to get excited about the senior center project, watch the video. It, it's not available to everybody yet, but, but I know that Rachel uh, was there and uh, it's just, it gets really exciting when you see the building and it starts to like, oh wow. And then, you know, so there is an excitement under this and I'm trying to temper that with prudence and reading with her contract.
Okay. Uh, Lynn?
Well, this is gonna feel like a really silly question since Tom asked a really great question. But can someone explain to me why we pay an architect for site demolition? Do I just not know enough about what architects do? Can someone help me understand what OPN architects do when we demolish something?
I can probably speak to that as we just did the uh, bid opening for the site demolition for the old post office and the library. Essentially, they manage the bidding process and they pulled together all the, the documents that are needed. So they work with the engineer to put together the plan set and then, um, and work with the lawyers to put together the contract and kind of shepherd that process through.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
What else?
Okay, we have a uh, motion second. Amanda and Tim, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Eight B ordinance number twenty-five dash oh five and ordinance establishing an ad hoc senior center building fund raising committee. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Tom and Tim. Questions, comments? Amanda?
And just to clarify, we had a library fundraising committee, but the library uh, board created that and had that, right? Just because it, it's a little bit separate as opposed to having the senior center fundraising committee be under our purview?
Yeah, the library board's a little different because we're statutorily, they oversee the library. So we had the fundraising committee was a subcommittee of the library board appointed by the library board, not by the village board because of that unique relationship with the library board.
Okay, good. Thanks for confirming that.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion by Tom, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item H C, proposal for lead and asbestos remediation for well number three from advanced health and safety. Any amount not to exceed nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. There was a memo explaining this pretty well. Um, let's get a motion on the table. First, the page and um, questions for, for, I believe, right?
And we have Cory here, who is.
Oh, yeah.
Project manager.
I need to pay better attention.
I'm assuming he was just there.
Right, yeah.
So just.
Anyway, yeah, go ahead.
Sure, just here to give you a quick update. Um, this proposal is to address some of the environmental concerns at well three that we've discovered. Uh, we did have some testing done. There's some lead paint on the roof and there are some asbestos components in the building. There's some gaskets um, for the water pipe. There's some electrical components. There's some mortar and some caulking that all have asbestos in it. There's also some materials that are difficult to test right now. Some of the electrical components, for example, we can't just dig into the electric cords to see if they have asbestos or not because the well is currently running and needs to be running. So some of the components we've assumed are asbestos and they'll just be handled like asbestos. Uh, it's just cheaper and easier to remediate those than it is to test those. Um, but that being said, there are some components that we do need to deal with. Um, those include that lead on the ceiling. They're going to um, encapsulate that with an epoxy um, on the ceiling. And then they're going to uh, remediate the asbestos within the building. So they need to set up air quality monitoring. They need to dispose of that material properly and have that uh, done by professionals. So the proposal in your uh, packet is from advanced health and safety. Um, they've done a lot of work for the village uh, in the past. Um, the contract also includes Davis Bacon Wage uh, requirements because the project is being funded by the D N R Safe Drinking Water Fund Loan Program. So that's one of the requirements, even though this isn't a part of the well reconstruction per se, they see it as part of the project. So we needed to include that with it. So uh, the proposal that we have in front of you is for doing those environmental services that we see that are needed right now. That being said, we are doing um, construction, we're doing demolition, and sometimes you find things that you don't expect. So uh, we've tried to anticipate everything that might come up, but just so you're aware, when we take the roof off and are connecting the new roof to the old roof, there might be other components that we find and that may need to be tested and things like that. Um, again, we tried to rule out everything that we could at this point, so this is kind of what we think is needed. Um, and if we come forward um, with anything else, uh, we hope that that would also include a deduct for uh, eliminating some of the demolition work um, that we would need to do if we did testing. Um, we would probably try to avoid remediating um, with the roof by just kind of encapsulating with a new roof over the top of it. So um, again, this is our proposal that we recommend at this point and the stage in the project.
Questions for Cory? No? Okay, we have a motion, Paige, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Cory, thanks.
Thank you.
Item nine, new business items for discussion, a possible action. A hydrant painting proposal from Ferguson Water Works for costs not to exceed thirty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars. Looking for motion. Amanda and Tim, questions or comments? Amanda?
Under budget. Just saying. Since I gave you a chance Lynn, but I'm saying spread the wealth, spread the wealth.
Okay.
Okay, uh, motion by Amanda, second by Tim. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item nine B, propose twenty-twenty-five summer village board outreach program. And Lynn?
Not much to say here. This is the schedule for the summer. Um, nothing new. The uh, these are all events that we participated in last year as well. Um, we did adjust some of the times. Uh, we moved to sounds of summer a little later. Um, sounds of summer starts at like six-thirty, so this will cover the half an hour before and the first half hour of the music. Um, I haven't really asked about National Night Out. I'm just hoping I put this on here and Chief is like, yeah, that'll be fine. I can absolutely ask, uh, and I will omit it if there is not space. But um, we do have permission on public art. Um, we're only going to be uh, at Summerfest on Friday evening. Last year we did most of the weekend and I just felt like we had better conversations, more connections on that first night when families are out and about to kind of see um, the festivities. Um, I think that's pretty much it. Uh, feel free to take out or add anything if you so wish. And also the title of that's incorrect. It's not winter, spring, it's summer. That's my fault.
Okay. Tom?
I just one question of why we didn't include the community band concerts? Is that just, they, they predate that and they started the, I think, uh, they run mostly through June. Four weeks of June and then I think the last one is the first of week and week of July. And they're the same dates of sound of uh, summer.
That's a great point. Let me reach out and see if I can.
Okay.
Add them to the calendar.
Amanda?
Uh, can I make a suggestion? Um, I, I, I don't know, maybe you were gonna publicize these uh, in some way. But you know, putting a list of where we intend to be when, even general terms, just dates and events so that people know to look for us uh, in the paper or something like getting it out there. Um, you know, because people might show up to Summerfest on Saturday and be like, I heard there was a table here on Friday. You know, if they just had some idea of, of where we were gonna be when with some dates, which would kind of prep people to look for us.
You bet.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you Lynn. Item ten.
Sorry.
Okay, looking, looking for a motion to approve the summer outreach. Uh, Paige and Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Item ten, reports of village officers, department heads and consultants. This is for information only. No action by the village board will be taken. A village administrator report. Uh, tend to be a police chief report. May to release this for May fifth and May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Those were both included in your packet. Question for the chief? Okay. Uh, tent C, Director of Public Works Report, wastewater treatment facility, page one, improvements project, April twenty-twenty-five report. Anything to add? Questions?
Tom?
Just a comment and I do appreciate the updates. It's hard to get over there to see what's going on at the wastewater treatment plant. I do appreciate the, the visuals and the updates and, because there is progress going on and there's a lot of meaningful work that's happening over there. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, item eleven, announcements and miscellaneous business. A announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Uh, department heads or staff, do you have any? Uh, Rachel, please.
Just a thank you to the community for supporting the Brat Bash last Friday. Um, to our amazing volunteers, to the businesses who ordered meals ahead of time, to all the people who came through, to Mother Nature for giving us the perfect day. Thank you all. It was very successful.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, board members, announcements, comments? There are none. Uh, eleven B, future agenda items. Lynn?
Um, I am on the Charge Up Dane County E V Commission. And we are looking for site, um, uh, potential sites for EV charging. It's through a grant program. The county has received funds for the planning and then will eventually hopefully receive funds for the implementing of those. And so the sustainability committee is gonna take a look at it uh, this week. But I would anticipate that if the village wanted to propose a couple of sites, the village board needs to green light that a little bit. Um, it's just an R F P process, so it doesn't necessarily mean that would be chosen, but we would be considered. So if we could put on a future agenda, just the consideration of a couple of recommended sites by the sustainability committee, I can get that recommendation to you by the end of the week. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, item twelve, without objection, we are adjourned.